Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to another meeting of the State and City Council. It is Monday, the seventeenth of October in the year of the current era, 2022. And those of us that are here are here, we have one council member absent, the rest are present. Staff, staff is at that table?
We also have staff that are online as well. Captain John Lance, Dan and Susan are here.
All right, so.
Staff are online.
Well, I see the library in here. I bought a book. Thank you. Okay, let's start with this flag, please, if you enjoy it. Hi, my name is.
Good morning.
The United States of America.
And to the people of America for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, let's see, are there any additions to the agenda? Apparently not. Don't hear any. Declaration of Ex parte compact, conflict of interest, bias, general features, none of that. Okay, no appointments this evening? Public comment? Let's do that. If it's okay with you folks, I'd like to start with a couple of things that are just general business, and then I'll go through the homeless, what was your copy of that? That okay? All right, we'll get, we'll get to it. So Julie Boxler, RDS event. Good evening, welcome and all that.
Did you want me to come up? Did you want me to come up?
She knows the drill, okay, go ahead.
Julie Boxler, sixteen sixteen Mount Jefferson Drive, State and Oregon. I'm the vice president of Revitalize Downtown State and a nonprofit group working to revitalize the downtown State and area, and our next event is over Thanksgiving weekend, November twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. And we've asked the city manager and the police chief, Gwen?
Captain.
Captain, Captain Gwen, to work on some street closures and helping to spare kids some spots. But we're going to have carriage rides Friday night and Saturday for each of the public. Santa's house and carolers and lighting up the tree on Friday night. So it should be a lot of fun, we hope you guys can all attend. And we, RDS sponsored a five hundred dollar prize for the People's Choice Award for the window decorating contest. And it has gotten to the businesses downtown, so excited. Even the ones that are like, oh, no, I don't stay open on Friday night, I don't have to stay open, and I'm gonna be in the window decorating contest, so that's been pretty exciting. So just wanted to let you know what RDS has been doing. That's our next event, we just finished fifteen weeks of the Farmers Weekend.
Thank you. And Mayor Julie stole one of my announcements, but we'll also be talking a little bit about that under my discussion, so I want to get some feedback from you guys on some, an aspect of that, so just more to come.
Julie, are donuts part of this?
Are you supplying them?
No.
Hot chocolate, we have hot chocolate and we have mulled wine in mugs that say State and Holiday Festival in them.
Great.
And those will be, the mulled wine will be available for different bars in our area.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question? Can you say the name of the events again?
It's State and Holiday Festival, November twenty-fifth, five to nine, and November twenty-sixth, which would be a Saturday from nine to six. We're having free carriage rides, a Christmas tree lot, Santa's house. There'll be some fire pits and games, covered seating area, mulled wine. We'll have a passport so that people can go get passports stamped at each of the individual businesses that are open, the retail businesses, and then they'll put them in a drop box and get an award and basket of goodies or basket of gifts or certificates.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ryan Mello, Ryan Mello, please.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Mello, and my wife Patricia, this is our first meeting, so thank you for having us. I have two quick concerns, one obviously would be supporting the agenda that you have, which is homeless. I do want to thank the council as well as the police department because I had addressed a pointed and detailed email, and two days later, the homeless were removed from the pavilion in the park. And we live next to the park, and it was, obviously my email will explain that, and whomever read it, fair enough, but I want to thank you for addressing the problem. Secondly, I have a question and possibly an initiative. Does our ballot box next to the library have cameras?
I don't know.
Is anybody familiar with harvesting, voter harvesting?
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, looks like the library director may have something to say about this.
So we have, we have some venues used to break camera, depending on the volatileness of the election. So there's not a permit to hammer out there, but we have in the past used a camera. We thought this is great.
I would like to, I'd like to, since you've used it one time, I guess this would be a good time. And I'd like to put initiative toward the committee to possibly consider that in a diligent manner. Granted, in our town, I'm sure we're pretty straightforward, honest people. However, if you haven't seen Two Thousand Mules, I would recommend take a very close look at that. And that'll give you the background and education to what that. Okay?
All right.
Thank you much.
Thank you, ma'am. Emma Rodriguez. Emma Rodriguez Bates, do I need to?
Do you need a letter?
Thing out there, well.
Well, thank you. So my name is Emma Rodriguez Bates, this is my first time coming into one of the meetings, and I recently started working in State and. And it's not that I don't come to State and all the time, I would rather go to State and or Albany than to go to Salem, most obviously. But I've noticed lately, I mean even just this morning, I was taking my children to the market and to Dollar Tree, and on our way back out of the parking lot, there was people smoking drugs right out in the open in the parking lot. And nothing, nothing ever seems to happen. I know personally, I've been asked a few different times to help shoe along some of the houseless people because I will do nice things for them, like bring them ice waters, things like that on hot days, bring them dog food, things like that, bring them soup when it's cold. And so a lot of the regular ones trust me. And so when I ask them to move along, most of the time they do, or if they just see my truck coming, they leave. But I've noticed that it's become more and more regular that more and more of them are coming. And I don't know what the plan is for that, but I do feel like it's something that I am most definitely intrigued by hearing your plan for.
Okay. Well, this lady lives on McLoughlin Lane in Orangeville. And works in State, could I ask where you work, please?
You don't remember me serving you a coffee every morning on Saturday and Sunday, Mr. Mayor?
Just on the weekends.
There you go.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
But the rest of the week, I'm a blank.
Well.
I'm a blank anyway.
Well, let's see, I filled in, I'll give you a hint here, I filled in for Sam and I filled in for Marcy.
I know, I know where you are.
Yeah.
But you're seeing.
But I'm in town every single day.
You're seeing this contrary behavior up in front of the Dollar Tree?
No, it's behind the building, in front of the building, all over, around there.
In that plaza area?
Yeah, and it is consistent and nonstop. And some of them have been blatantly told that they are trespass from the property, and the only time they run and hide is when they see my truck pulled in.
Okay.
And that's because they know I will walk up and tell them, it's time to go, you know better. The police are gonna come if you don't. They're not worried about the police coming, because the police don't. I mean, what are the police gonna tell them?
Somebody's got a call.
They, the market, I know that they have been calling on at least the one very, very popular guy, and I think he might know who I'm talking about. But today, there was two brand new ones that I haven't even seen myself out back, smoking drugs behind hidden pack. And as I pull through the parking lot with my kids, I was just hoping my kids didn't turn their head that way. So I just am curious, and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, homeless want to start with the, Mark Ferry.
Mayor.
Who?
Mayor, Julia, this is me. Sorry, do you want to wait and take public comments on the homeless component when we're talking about the homeless section?
Up to these, up to these people?
Yeah.
I'm just on an agenda, I don't care.
Okay, because if we did that, then we could basically talk about the task force and the plan, and then take comment, and then have council discuss it? If that's okay?
Okay, Mark.
Aye, aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
First thing, I'm all set for this.
Sorry, Mark.
We'll get everyone addressed, you watch. Okay, so consent agenda, little housekeeping item here, and then we'll get into this general business. So, so we did some action on the attendance, the consent agenda, excuse me, for September nineteenth.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to offer a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Oh, motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as submitted? Recorder? Still haven't got you a proper, ah, sorry. Mr. Recorder, would you pull the council, please? Is there more?
Counselor County?
Yes.
Counselor Ord?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Pass the board.
What have we got? I am just following the rules. Okay, we got that. All right. Here we go. Thank you, folks, under general business, what was the vote on that? Four to all?
Four out.
Thank you. Homeless Task Force framework. Administrator, will you take us through this, please?
Yes, I will, and just as a reminder, we do have Gwen as well as others on video, so if there's specific questions that you want staff to speak to when you take public testimony, just let me know and we'll have them come on, so that way we're not sort of jumping on and answering questions. So, so in your packet is the framework that's proposed as a reminder. On September fifteenth, we had a pretty robust work session with staff and legal counsel going through the laws and the rules and sort of the issues that we're currently faced with. And the discussion was to put together a task force to discuss a little bit more within the context of what the law says and see if we can come up with some, some solutions and paths forward as a community. So what's in front of you is the proposed framework for the task force, a committee of about eight people, a representative from the North Standham Service Integration Team, a resident from the wire, a representative from Arches, which is a homeless service provider, really serving all of the county. They're, they're currently located in Salem. I met with them today, and I think that there's, the person I would recommend actually actively has teams of people that come into State and as well as other cities within the canyon on a weekly basis to provide support to homeless populations. Two representatives from the business community, I recommend one from a downtown business and one from business at large in the city. Two representatives from the resident community, again, I recommend one from the downtown area and one from the community at large, and then two city council members. And then have it staffed by myself, Captain Johns, Lance, and then potentially Kendall, who's the public works operations supervisor, but that's something we can kind of talk about with Lance. And then as needed, we would pull in additional staff from, from city parks, library, planning. And then it was also recommended to me today that we might want to include, on an as needed basis, others like Bogad, Marion County House, not necessarily being on the task force all the time, but a key points in the, in the discussion. With their purpose being to evaluate the existing additions, really get a better handle of what's, what's happening on the ground, both in the truly unhoused people that you see outside sleeping in, in public spaces, but also the almost unhoused or the couch surfing type of situation. And then identifying, evaluating options for addressing this and outline the, to add a minimum to include. And then I also included some proposed timing and kind of what we would anticipate happening over the course of, of this task force, ultimately culminating, well, beginning with some pretty robust citizen input in February, March, and then also having some listening sessions later in the summer, and then culminating in December with some recommendations to city council to consider further actions and co- amendments. So I really want.
Let's, let's go after the.
Ryan?
Okay, here we go.
So after that brief introduction, we have really established network connection and streaming, and we've also pulled up the homeless task force framework that was in your packet so that you, as well as the public, can see it. Again, it includes makeup, purpose, and then methods and timing to go through this task force to try to get to some recommendations. There's actually two points, one is in June, we have to take some actions to comply with House Bill thirty-one fifteen, so we'll need to do some initial work leading up to June, but then we have some additional opportunities for outreach, listening sessions to, to refine and, and go a little bit further. And that would have us culminating in December with some recommendations to council. So, yes.
Could that be made bigger?
Can it be made bigger?
Like, was moving to school class a little bit?
Oh, I don't know. Yeah, we do, yeah, there we go.
There we go.
Does that matter?
Trick is to get big enough so everyone can read it out there.
Yeah.
There we go.
So with that, I would recommend, if you guys have, council, sorry, has specific questions with me, I'm happy to answer that, or if you want to go into the public comment portion, we then discuss.
What, what, just for the audience, and me myself at least, what is House Bill thirty-one fifteen?
That's the, the legislation that was passed that basically said jurisdictions have to amend their codes to remove things that, that are essentially targeting, that, that basically the unhoused people cannot, cannot meet. So we need to kind of go through that, that process.
Cannot be one.
Yeah, we want to understand everything.
Yeah. Are we talking equity, exclusion?
Just saying.
That would be like a Boise decision then, wouldn't it?
Yeah, basically, it's, it's.
Criminalize homeless business?
Right, and so we as a city will need to take actions in our code and make some decisions that either, that either say where someone can be or don't, don't regulate things at all. We'll go through that, that process as we go through the task force. And we will have, I don't have legal representation here this evening because we're mainly just talking about the framework, but as we go through the task force meetings, we will have legal counsel here to make sure that we're staying on.
That helps, thank you. Okay, what's next?
I'm sorry, I have a quick question if I can. I thought they just had to have somewhere local available to them.
Whoa.
No? Sorry.
I need you into public comment, and you can come out of cover, but need to use that mic so everyone gets to hear, especially me. Okay? Thank you. All right, what's next?
Legal counsel, county.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, do whatever. I just was curious, Julie, are you gonna go over attachment two at all for what the actual fiscal impact is of this issue that our communities encounter?
Sure, I certainly, I certainly can. So this was also at the work session, it's requested that we start to quantify a little bit more about what we, what it costs us to address the homeless issue that we currently have. And as I mentioned at that work session, we hadn't been tracking it really at the staff hour level, and we're tracking it very well, and I announced down to begin tracking that. And then what is included in attachment two is the beginning of that, and with the caveat that it's not, it's not perfect because we haven't been tracking it for a very long time. But based on, from what we were hearing from our police captain, as well as park staff, there is an estimate of about fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year in staff time alone that's currently spent dealing with, that being sort of dealing with complaints, cleaning things up, dealing with ramifications of people that are unhoused. And then there's also storage considerations, that's a little bit harder to quantify, but we have to, if we clean up a can, we have to retain items of value. That is sometimes, you know, maybe what's not valuable to us is valuable to them, and we still have to maintain that by law for up to thirty days unless they come and take it. So there's that component. And then there's also some, which I don't have numbers for yet, potentially a component of increased disposal costs with republic services. So that's more to come, I will continue to work on quantifying that a little bit more as we go forward, but that's what's included in attachment two, is beginning of trying to quantify the fiscal impacts of how we currently, what our current practices are.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have one last one, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to compliment you first off, say you did a very good job of that, especially since you hadn't been tracking that until now, and I appreciate that. Also, I hope everybody heard the important number there, fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year. The other thing I wanted to clarify about attachment two is how often are we as a staff receiving complaints and concerns from the community about homeless persons in general on public property?
So I'm actually gonna ask Captain Johns to respond to that, because that's probably where we get the, the most direct calls, I mean, I think we get complaints and comments, I know the library staff will get comments. It's possible that park staff or public works crew when they're out and about might get things, but the most direct, you know, call is gonna be into the police department. And Captain Johns, can you comment on that?
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, like, I'm not hearing stuff, and then I'm hearing stuff, and then the camera doesn't seem to be working properly. So I would say most days we get, you know, a call, sometimes it's multiple. I would say when I started looking at hours, it's like, you know, maybe it's a call where the plaza is reporting that they're seeing activity in the lot, we drive through and address it, and that could take fifteen minutes to a half hour. Some of it just depends if there's follow-up to it, or if we're writing citations. Some stuff might involve court time or records time to input stuff. So it's a little bit hard to completely track. And then as far as like our storage, currently we just have storage from one incident that we're currently storing, so the storage end of aspect of things isn't overwhelming. But, you know, the, the planning for how we maintain our evidence as opposed to the safekeeping stuff and the man hours for needing someone to release the property as well. So, you know, a lot of our stuff is driven by calls, people calling in to make reports because we can't be everywhere, and then we're also addressing a lot of other issues besides the homelessness issues. So we're out patrolling traffic areas where we've got complaints about traffic incidents, we're doing school patrols, addressing reported crimes. And so we are somewhat complaint driven, but we do very routinely self-initiated activities. And so last night, we were driving past one of the areas where someone had been trespassed and had been a problem, and our officer, you know, without having a complaint, stopped and addressed it and dealt with it, and I think we might actually have come to a very successful conclusion on that one. But, yeah, it just, it really depends day to day, but very routinely, we have a circuit of areas that we drive, whether it's the church parking lots, the plazas, the parks, that our officer's getting out and doing walkthroughs and trying to address and get ahead of the problem.
Captain Johns, thank you very much for that explanation. Also, I want to compliment your officers' proactivity, I want to see more of that from our police force, and I appreciate that happening last night, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and then the other thing I would say, we've, we've talked about it before, but a lot of these issues have to be very much behavior driven and property driven. So we can't be addressing the person if there's not a behavior behind that, meaning a trespass, a littering ordinance, or some sort of crimes. And then property, if, you know, they're creating a camp of property, that's a different issue. But if it's just someone sitting in an area, lying in an area, then we've got to address behavior that's based on ordinance or crime.
Yes, Captain Johns, has that number in your report, that, has that come out yet? The cost, but the idea of between seven hundred and eighty and a thousand hours a year of police time in one form or another being spent on this, has that come out yet? Has anyone mentioned that?
So that, oh, sorry, go ahead, I was just gonna say, so that's in her report, and it's based on an extrapolation of what she's been keeping track of. Is that correct, Gwen, that the number that you provided me is, is a, is a guesstimate based on what you've been looking at recently?
Yeah, we, we looked at some average weeks, and so I guess too, what we need to understand is, you know, we have twenty-four hour police coverage, you know, the parks has a parks person working forty hours a week, so we've got twenty-four hour coverage with overlap. So thirteen sworn officers scheduled forty hours a week. But we also currently have the chief out and the sergeant on vacation, right? So, and three guys at the academy. So that was based on how many hours a week we've got officers out there, and how many hours then are dedicated to calls that we can tie to issues related to trespass, littering, issues that are surrounding homelessness, or people that we know currently are homeless.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next move.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
So Julie, I know that this is, is, is difficult. So Julie, I know that this is is a difficult to do. But have you considered or has the staff talked about how do we separate the all over issue of cleaning up parks, trespassing people, because just because we and and I'm guessing that these are people that are probably known to be unhoused, that you're that you've counted in trespassing. But how do we separate and really try to find tune like what is actually the homeless issue and then what is not?
Yeah, I think that, again, this 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 number in the attachment two is really a a guesstimate. There it is going to be challenging and the reason why it's kind of worded the way it is is it's there are some things that are more obviously, you know, if you're cleaning up a homeless camp, you know, it's caused by the homeless situation. But for instance, I saw on social media, there are some reports of vandalism to a little a little library thing. And there's some discussion about it being tied to homeless. And those types of things, it may or may not be tied to homeless, but I think we have to be careful not to assume. And so all acts of vandalism are not caused by homeless people. So we need to be thoughtful and careful as we, the city, are quantifying it to be fairly certain that it's tied to to a homeless reason. And there may be lots of other things going on in the city that may or may not be. But we're going to probably not include those numbers in our in our estimates. I think that's why Captain Johns was saying it's kind of hard. They might get a call that's a theft that may end up being a theft by a homeless person or they may get a call that's a theft that's not by a homeless person. You know, so it's like just kind of parsing that out is is trickier than I think people would automatically assume. So it's not going to be perfect, but we're going to do the best we can to try to identify those.
Okay, we can we can back this around up here more, but I guess I'd like to hear from some of these folks. And they're probably ready after sitting through forty minutes of us. Mark Fett.
And as he's coming up, like, obviously, he can say absolutely whatever he wants. And I just want to get input from you ultimately on the framework and whether or not we're going in the right direction or whether or not there's things we need to add. And so hopefully, the public, as they're speaking, can maybe help us get this better if possible.
We will do that. They'll let us leave tonight till we do that.
Oh, wow.
All right. Mark lives at Post Office Box One Twenty Seven in State. Go ahead, please.
Hey, guys, thank you for having me. My name's Mark. Since January, I kind of wrote some notes out. I wanted to make sure I covered everything. I'll try real quick. I care. And since January, I've spent a lot of time working out at Anytime Fitness at the State Plaza. I spend a lot of time there during the day and at night. I spend time cooling off in my truck in between my gym sessions. So I witness a lot of what's happening. Basically, I've witnessed an extreme amount of drug use. Open, they don't care, they're smoking meth all over the place, under the trees during the day, in their cars during the day, on the sidewalk at night, under the lights. It just doesn't faze them at all. I'm watching a lot of drug sales happening. There's clearly a bicycle deferring issue in State. I'm watching them bring back bicycle trailer poles worth of stuff loading in vehicles, then they ride off again all night long. They've been sleeping in front of the gym. I bought this and bought this and bought this for like five, five months plus going on. It's gotten better at this point because I keep standing up, I've gotten the landlord involved, I keep calling the police. I've watched them peeping in the windows of the gym and I'm watching them basically scope out the cars in the parking lot. There's also a lot of issues, cars being broken into, blah, blah, I know. The police have told me there are three vehicles stolen from State on average every day. That's an extreme amount, in my opinion. But these same people that are still in the cars are sleeping at the State Plaza where I park. They're the same ones doing the drugs, same ones doing everything. And it's getting to the point where if I don't feel safe, it's tough for me to watch the younger females, the kids, you know, the other patrons of the gym walking in and out. And they're clearly not feeling safe either. They're looking, you know, it's it's just it's gross to watch. When I call the police, it's basically a waste of time at this point. Last time I called the police was a week ago. I was watching them smoke meth right in front of the Happy Dragon. Same individuals that were camped there all day. They were smoking meth. The police called me back, said drugs are basically illegal now, there's nothing we can do. But they don't even encourage them to move on their way. The camping there is normal. And I don't understand why that's accepted if they have camped down by the river as well. Like, I just don't want our children or our community to see this. They deserve it better. You know what I mean? Let me look at this real quick. One of the guys that I'm dealing with on a daily basis is mentally challenged. And I watched him get dropped off and picked up daily. Apparently, he lives on a town in Style. He gets dropped off, picked up by his mom. He's one of these guys out here dealing drugs, you know, checking the cars out, all that good stuff. It's tough calling the police at this point. It's a waste of my time, it's a waste of their time. When they show up and they don't do anything, it makes like, it just makes me feel stupid and it makes me feel dumb. And then it gets to the point where these bums are fucking me off and starting aggression with me. And I'm not even aggressive with them, and they know that I'm there all the time and they know that I'm seeing all this. So it's got me in a kind of a tricky spot. Unfortunately, I'm the one dealing with it. It's made me not wanting to go to the gym anymore, but ultimately, the police have also told me that they won't trespass them because they don't work the Happy Dragon's business. Because they're in the gambling all the time, these same people. But when you talk to Happy Dragon management, they say that they don't want them anywhere around. And so it's like, the police, I feel like they're enabled a little bit by not encouraging that. They could use their community policing, you know, their being there, their presence to kind of shoot them on their way. But instead, they're camping out underneath Noel Oyden sign. And when I talk to these individuals, they tell me they're above the law. They're so high on this meth that they they all think they're above the law completely. They tell me to call the police. They tell me that the police won't do anything. And again, they tell me they're above the law.
Mark?
Yeah. You can talk more. I appreciate your time.
Did you get most of it?
I think I got all of it.
Okay, thank you.
I think I guess.
All right.
And just as a reminder that public comments are absolutely able to be written, so we didn't get through everything. You can send it to us and we'll make sure counsel gets that as well.
Sebastian Baker. Mr. Baker, please.
So the library boxes that were just mentioned are actually.
Do you live at Five Twenty West Water Street? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So the little library boxes that were just mentioned were actually mine. And so I have a statement prepared. I will probably go off here and there off if anybody will be equipped one. Good evening. My name is Sebastian Baker and I'm an Eagle Scout from State Boy Scout Troop Fifty. I became an Eagle Scout in the summer of two thousand twenty one after completing three free community library boxes from my Eagle Scout service project. These boxes that myself, my parents, and some of my friends from my troop assisted in building were placed in Pioneer Community Center at San Yan Parks. Yesterday, my mom and I and I have discovered that the boxes at Pioneer Community Center parks have been vandalized. Though we have no definitive proof that they were caused by the homeless, it's we've seen and heard different reports from people that could point to possibly them. I've heard reports of homeless people near the covered bridge throwing stuff at people to keep them away. I've heard stories of homeless people going to the bathrooms at Pioneer Park and trying to plug in the log room so people can't use them. I've also found the illegal encampment notices inside stuffed inside my boxes multiple times, which means they've been there, they're most likely. So in all reality, though we have no definitive proof, it's not a far fetched theory to suggest that it is them. As of now, we are looking for no locations from the boxes. It is apparent that these parks are becoming no longer safe for mine. I wanted this to be made known to the leadership of this town in hopes of finding a solution to this. As I'm not too familiar with local government and what they can and cannot do, I don't think I can offer a Bible answer to our town's problems. Since we are all here discussing the homelessness issue overall, it is obvious that I'm the only person having issues. And I'm sure that all of us here would like to see our town be clean and respectful of people who are either moving here and coming from out of town to visit. Our town needs to be a welcoming place if we want to succeed in the future. I've lived in State my entire life and I do not want to see my hometown potentially become an unsafe place for our future generations. Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, Adam Culbertson. Lives at Two Seventy Seven North Third in State.
Actually, I don't live at that address, but that's where my business is located. My name's Adam Culbertson, I own Home Row Room, and he's in downtown State. We pull in about a hundred, hundred fifty people a day downtown to try to lighten the area up, which we've always tried to do. But we've definitely dealt with the homeless issue there. It was it was very short lived as, you know, we're not bound by certain things that the police are bound by. So we let the folks know and made it real crystal clear that they weren't welcome and that they shouldn't shouldn't be out in front of our business soliciting, trying to get free product from people that leave, trying to get people to buy product for them when they come in. Stole our bike rack, you know, things like that. We made it real clear that it's not something we'll stand for and there are there are consequences to people's actions. And so it stopped real fast. But I do notice in the parking lot, you know, in the public, I would call it the courthouse parking lot, you know, we have cameras that are back there. And so we we get to watch all kinds of interesting things back there. People having sex, people smoking meth, people shooting heroin, you know, fentanyl, whatever it is they might be doing, which is really none of our business because of concern us with these things that we see. And it is the homeless people, it is the people sitting in their cars most of the time. Every once in a while, you can see somebody in a car, but usually they're in the corner. They're in between, well, I guess it can be Love and Up and Down, but it used to be Spaniel's Building and the courthouse is a little area right there that they seem to go huddle into. And so it's it's one of those things, it's definitely created an issue. And I know that the other business owners downtown said that, you know, it makes their customers think twice about coming downtown because they don't want to deal with it. So I definitely think it's something that that needs to be addressed. And, you know, if there's anything we can do as business owners, more than what we're already doing, just let us know because, again, we're not a little different than being the police and whatnot. I'm not saying that I'm for vigilante justice, but I think vigilante vigilantes paying attention and passing the word around and everybody communicating together is definitely a help.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. All right. Let's see. I'm going to see. Ms. Lennox?
I'm going to actually pass him up. Emma speak. I'll let Ken Carey go with Jorge if you don't mind.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, he's going to come.
Yes, I'm going.
Okay, Jim?
Good evening, my name's Ken Carey, nineteen forty one Kent Avenue. I'm also a business owner of the Spud Bus and Third Avenue Dairy. My concern is, I'm going to read this. It's more questions to our city, our council members. As I sit here tonight sharing this, we all know this is a huge concern nationwide. Every city is trying to fight against this homeless situation. Mental illness, military veterans, drug addicts. I can drive down Powell Street, Powell Boulevard in Portland, and I see tents lined up on my sister's street by Triment on Two Oh Five. Publican combat this. As we look at the concerns of homelessness, have any of us seen any city conquer this? And I know we can talk about it till we're blue in the face. We all know that this is a concern that we all need to face in combat. My question is, what does homeless homeless task force look like? I remember back in the day when the DARE program came out for all the schools and they're trying to fight the drug and alcohol issues in the school. What does a task force look like? Who's creating the task force? Is it just the police? Is it the community involvement creating the task force? How do we lock arms as a community and make this work together? You know, I was homeless at one time in my life. I'm a recovering drug addict. It's not an easy task. It's not an easy road to go down. We all have opinions and concerns. And do we know the percentage of success regarding a task force? Regarding, it doesn't matter if it's a population of eight thousand or a hundred million. There's going to be a task force involved in each jurisdiction of each city. And I'll end it with this, actions and compassion and empathy speak louder than words. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay. Ms. Emma?
Okay.
Best weekend coffee in the city.
Thank you, sir. Emma Rodriguez Bates, and I live in Ormsville, but I work here in State again. So my comment was back towards the outward comment I was trying to make earlier towards her plan. And so I have a question for you, I guess. I thought, and I may have read this wrong, I quickly read through a whole bunch of stuff and listened to the prior council meeting last night. So I would just kind of like to address this really quick. I thought that the houseless houseless population simply had to have somewhere local available twenty four hours a day that they are able to be at. And then they are allowed to be trespassed fairly easily. They are allowed to be removed very fairly easily. It should not have to be a burden on every business owner in town to trespass them individually when it would be much more beneficial, at least in my eyes, and I don't know, you know, what budget looks like or anything like that. I'm just, simply speaking, would be to have somewhere local for them to be able to go and be at. I believe what I heard and read was that they just had to have somewhere to be able to sleep and get warm at. And that they don't have to be able to be there twenty four hours a day, but that it has to be able to be accessed for resources. So my, I guess my other question would be if those options are able to be opened locally, what does that look like? And is there a plan for something like that to go into place?
Well, that's probably, probably what part of this task force would do is try to sort that out. And that's like, as it's been laid out here, it's most of a year long process here.
Right.
I'm hoping I don't misspeak by saying there is probably at least a low grade community fear that if we start offering services, campgrounds, this kind of thing, it simply isn't an attraction.
I do agree with that.
If I'm wrong, I would stand corrected, but I don't think I am.
No, you're not wrong in that. And I do understand that there is also a fear of if you place a business proposal somewhere to do something like that, that local local people around them may not want that. But at the same point, it's got to, there's got to be a give and a take. It can't just be full of weights. We can't just have our streets clean and have nowhere to be. And the last thing is, I will address Mark's point about the Happy Dragon, and I will go talk to the owners personally and ask them to trespass the houseless population out there because police cannot cannot solicit a trespass. So I will be proactive on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, does anyone, in all fairness, does anyone else need a second shot? Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. The other, the other lady that gave, Ms. Lennox, did you want to?
Mine was just to do with the crime and its travel.
Come on, give it to her.
Come on.
Come on.
Unfortunately, in order to be heard on the microphone, you have to.
You're right. Courage in the face of adversity. Go ahead, all right.
I don't really know what I can say in here, but my name's Kalinda Lennox, I live in Style. And the Style community page every single day. And my neighbors and I have all been affected by crime, traveling out. People come in and stealing gas and stealing the stuff on our farms, our ranches. And our community page. people, but are they just giving them a ticket and then they're trespassing tomorrow? Like what's actually the follow-through to make them quit doing it?
I don't know.
Yeah, it seems to be that way everywhere. There's no actual prosecution of any of it, so they don't really care and they just keep doing it. So it's gonna take us, actual homeowners and business owners, to actually get rogue to start making stuff happen. Is that what I'm hearing because it's not gonna stop any other way?
That's a little, I'd suggest that's a little extreme, but it, I hate to.
Well, it's putting all of us in a hard position when the county, the law enforcement can't do anything either. So I mean, what else are we supposed to do? Just take continuing to get our stuff stolen and vandalized or? I'm just hoping that the county will come up with some solution other than just we trespass them and nothing happens or we took them to jail for the night and nothing happens and just keep doing it.
Mr. Mayor, a quick clarification question.
Go ahead, please.
Are you referencing Lynn County or Marion County?
Lynn County.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
This is Marion County. That's why I was confused. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, they're just saying from someone in my community was saying that the homeless problem here in Staten is the people that are coming to our county and committing crimes.
Yeah, I'm fine. Thanks.
Okay. But that's all. I'm just wanting to know, is there gonna be any legal follow-through with these things? Are they just gonna keep happening until we have to actually protect ourselves?
Have you heard of something called the Boise, the Boise decision in the federal court?
No.
You heard of that?
Uh-uh.
Can I summarize it real quickly? It just says basically that you can't criminalize homelessness. You can't.
No, I'm saying criminalizing the people that are committing the crimes that are living in these homeless camps.
Yeah, I don't know. What it's done, in a way, I think it's almost, it's paralyzed a lot of our ability to deal with some of these things. They just, these court rulings say you just can't do this or that or something else. And what can you do? And there's that open question and no real answers.
Well, I mean, how many times does somebody get arrested for theft before they actually do time for it?
I don't know. So, and Mr. Mayor, those questions are a bigger societal governance question that are not really answerable by the city council. What the task force is going to try to do is look at the issue of homelessness holistically, looking at the mental health, the drug, the criminality, as well as the lack of housing and see if we can come up with some specific things that we, the community, can do, that partner agencies can do, that will kind of give us a roadmap. It's not gonna be perfect. It's a complicated problem, but it will allow us to have some sort of framework to try to solve these problems as best we can. It's not a simple answer, but what she's referring to is really the legal system, which isn't what you guys or even our police department have, you know, they can do certain things, but at the end of the day, it's the court system and the legal system that will take action on putting people in jail or not putting people in jail.
I didn't know that. I thought that maybe we could bring it to you and maybe make something happen, so. Thank you.
Second shot, you have a question?
Again, Ken Carey, 1941 Kent Avenue, city council, city's employees. Thank you for sitting here tonight and listening to these questions. My question is this, the questions that we presented tonight, something you will discuss amongst yourselves and then come back with answers or we've got to be able to address this tonight and give the people here some answers. And I know all of you are citizens of Staten. You probably do the same things in your own neighborhoods. We're all in this together. We need to combat this together, but I'd like to know if we can maybe hear some answers tonight regarding some of the questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I tackle that one a little bit? Ken, thanks for those comments and I think I will tell you that this is basically the second step in direction of trying to address this. The first meeting we had, had the city attorney there who gave us the oversight or gave us an overview of all the challenges that we're facing. And I think a lot of people don't understand the base of it, how we got to this point today and similarly, I'm not a lawyer, I might not speak as a lawyer, but I will tell you there's three different things that we're challenged with. And as the mayor stated, it's Boise v. Martin. If you guys don't know what that is, please look it up. That's essentially a decision out of the Ninth Circuit Court that applies to the entire West Coast, that does exactly what the mayor said, prohibits people being charged for basically sleeping outside. That's where it starts. Second one that came to light was Cottage Grove, thought they had a solution to it. Cottage Grove put some actions in place. They were challenged in court, those were overturned. That's the second aspect of the homeless situation that we have to commit with. The third piece was that the state legislature codified both those rulings in state statutes. So now we have this from a state statute level. So when you guys are frustrated about this, remember who put that in place, remember to reach out to those folks and try to go into the changer of mind. Measure 110 made drugs legal in Oregon, very much to the dismay of a lot of people. And all factors into all these situations that we're dealing with. Our overview from the city attorney was fantastic, gave us insight to all three of those things and also talked about what we could do and that's the formation of this task force coming together. There are some things that we can do and you're right, one of the questions was, oh, there's a place that you can go and then you can start enforcing it. That's gonna be a challenge for us because imagine us now being tasked with the ability to go and say, well, this park is gonna be a law, a law of homelessness camp there, this park's not, or this portion of the town's gonna have a disportionment. It's gonna be a real challenge for us to do that. So that's what we're up tonight with the formation of this committee and that's what we're having discussion. So to your answer, Ken, yes, we're gonna continue to address this and the best way that we can have is the first part of it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So along with, along with looking at that case, Boise versus Martin, go back and look at the work session that we have. So if you go on YouTube, you can go watch, it's kind of long, but you can go watch, it was on September 15th.
It was and actually, I was just talking with Alyssa. We're gonna, we're gonna make sure we create a page dedicated to this topic, so we'll have the work session link as well as the framework link and as we do any public outreach, we'll have information there. So give us a day and then we'll have something on the website for you to do more research.
So make sure you go back and watch that and it'll give you a little bit of insight as to, like, you mentioned, what the lawyer was talking about, what are frustrations and the things that we're trying to combat to come up with solutions and just help you figure out where we are and starting this journey. And then I just wanted to say, thank you all for coming because it's so nice to hear from you, so, and try to figure out these solutions. This is wonderful. I know that you're all frustrated and we are too, so we really do appreciate your input and thank you for being here. One of the things that happened, so the way that the meetings are set up is that we hear from you on an issue, but it's not really a time for back and forth. It's just a time, like, it is you telling us your thoughts and opinions on things and then we do a discussion. So it's, we can have like these listening sessions. If you look in the packet, it's talking about this task force, there is a time for having like group discussion, but the meetings aren't set up that way and it can be hard sometimes, I know, when we're sitting up here and you ask us a question and then we just stare at you because we're not really supposed to, we can ask like a terrifying question about something, but we're really not supposed to have a back and forth. It's just not the way the meeting is. So I just wanted to put that out there for you because I feel like you're probably sitting there wondering why we're not responding to you. So just understand that we do have questions written down or we're thinking about them and so we're about to do discussion and most likely those questions will be answered because we're trying to be thoughtful of them. And then we can't take questions from the audience either, so.
I don't really have a question. I just want to thank you personally for posting about this being on Facebook because there's several of us that wouldn't be here without that post. So thank you personally for posting that on Facebook to let everyone know. That was a great way to get the community involved. Why the city of Staten doesn't post them every time they come up when the next city council meeting is gonna be on the city of Staten website or on Facebook page, I don't know, but thank you for posting it very much.
We're trying, we're trying to, the staff is trying to be better about getting communication out, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Real quick for staff, Julia, you mentioned the site page coming up right now, right? Not tomorrow, but now, no, just kidding. No, I was just wondering, in addition to what you already mentioned there, could we also just have some brief explanation on case line general, specifically to also, I believe that Johnson v. Grant's past decision, I don't believe we've talked about that one yet, I think that should probably be expanded upon too.
Yeah, well, absolutely. So you want me to explain that now or you want me to?
No, I would like to be on the website so that people know where you can find that information and understand kind of what we're under as a council as we tackle this issue.
Absolutely. Yeah, so, well, yeah, we'll have the PowerPoint, we'll have, there's a legal warrant cities grant primer on this issue that we'll post that has all that case law as well as the work session and then once the task force is started and up and running, we'll have the materials associated with that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One other thing, I would just emphasize, first emphasize and, you know, there is an election coming up and this is, brings to a point that's very important for everyone to know, especially with these lower-level things, your judges, your DA's, your county commissioners, not just the measures and the big names on the ballot, but every single one of those positions affects how the laws are prosecuted and potential and all that kind of thing. So those, definitely get out there and do your research on those candidates and things like that and make sure you go in.
Thank you, man.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Are you done with public comment?
I'm finished.
I do have a couple more questions, starting with, for Julia, start with the makeup of the task force.
Okay.
I recall the lawyer suggesting a limit of nine folks, maybe?
Yeah, I think she said seven to nine is kind of what she referred to.
And honestly, I think this is a little like having six folks here, is that what it is?
It would be eight, so two counselors, two residents, two business owners and then two others, which one would be from Saniam Sid and then another one would be from Arches. So it's eight.
I would say not counting those two folks at the top. We could probably increase, I would like to see it increased from a community standpoint. Maybe make it a couple of business owners and a couple of, a couple more residents to make up for maybe alternatives and if nothing else.
So four, so two downtown, two at large for both residents and?
Yeah, I would like to see that and I don't know the rest of the council things, but.
Mr. Mayor, this council, I actually favor that. I'm gonna agree with that one.
Resident choices from different parts of the city?
That would be more than two.
If you were gonna pick four.
Yeah, and ultimately, I'd like to get some input from you guys, from the council, on how we want to select this. If we, I'm thinking of an, you know, like an applicant, very simple application of interest and then we could ask geographic location and then have, you know, a couple counselors help narrow down where those people should be from. As proposed, I had one representative from downtown, one from at large. Would you want to do two from downtown and two from at large or have four from at large?
I was thinking one downtown and then three at large.
Okay.
Does it, I mean, the downtown is kind of, it's a concentrated presence, I'm sorry, concentrated presence, but I'd like to hear from you to show you that.
Julia, this, in this kind of nuts and bolts discussion, I thought of people from different, I think different neighborhoods have different levels of concern about the homeless or just vandalism in their neighborhoods. Different neighborhoods experience different things and we should get samples from a couple or three of them, at least, I think.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Julia, how do we, after we figure all this out, how do we, how are we gonna get information to be able to submit?
To submit? So we would likely do that through our website as well as Facebook and Nextdoor through all of our social media. San Diego reform this, we're soliciting applications. Obviously, we would look to council to help us, you know, spread the word as well, but that would be kind of.
Put it in the water bill? Do we have time to do that?
We will look into that. We're not sure if we have time to do that. I will say, of all the things on social media, you know, homelessness is certainly one that gets a lot of attention and so I hope that we don't have not people spreading misinformation and so, you know, I think that would be a good tool, but it would be certainly good to get other people to, not our own social media, so, you know, we'll see if we can, we'll see about the water bill, see if that's possible. Good. So my thought on that is we solicited, get some candidates, have a mini committee of counselors to select who would be on that and then formalize this through a resolution. Just sort of reforming, it's not a permanent thing that's gonna go with code, but it's just sort of a, here's what the purpose of this task force is, here's who's appointed to it. And then you guys, the council, will need to discuss who amongst you will be the two that would be on that committee. So I think we could do that in the next year or two. So in answering, so one of the questions was who's creating it, it's really gonna be council creating this committee, if that is, if you were okay with that.
What else?
Are there other questions on the makeup, the purpose or the methods in timing?
Tell me, tell me, when did you want to start this?
So I, as outlined, basically, I would spend November through January, basically soliciting the committee, going through, formalizing it, having some, basically, November through January, deform the committee and have the first meeting. So hopefully by the first of the year, we'll have a committee in place oriented and have a meeting. That's my goal. My goal.
Somebody will be involved. Anyway, what else?
It's, it's staff.
So staff's gonna be running the meetings and like getting all the data together and
so we're doing the outcomes of the listening, learning sessions and getting that all together and everything.
That's the expectation.
Yeah.
And yes, it will be a lot of training.
Through the spring, don't forget that we'll be involved in budget hearings through part of the spring, through April, May, maybe into June, whatever it takes. And some of this, some of this will kind of slow down or back burner for a while there as you work through, as you folks work through other problems. So, yeah, just keep it, eyes on the prize, I guess.
Yeah, thanks for saying that, Mr. Mayor. I had a discussion with Julia about the.
Yes, go ahead.
Is staff, so, staff's gonna be running the meetings and, like, getting all the data together? So if you're gonna have lots of listening, learning sessions, and getting that all together and everything?
That's the expectation. And yes, it will be a lot of time.
Sure, this spring, don't forget that we'll be involved in budget hearings through part of the spring, through April, May, maybe into June, whatever it takes. And, uh, some of this, some of this will kind of slow down or backburner for a while there, as you work through, as you folks work through other problems. So, yeah, just keep it, eyes on the prize, I guess.
Yeah, thanks for saying that, Mr. Mayor, I had a discussion with Julia about the, um, the review of our code. I think that we need to be careful with that, everybody would cut ourselves off with that. Uh, maybe move that up on the timeline somewhere, maybe have that, but we have to do it either way, whether the committee's involved in it or not. We know it's gonna happen, and we don't have that done by July first, so, uh, I would just encourage us to keep that at the center a little bit more.
Yeah, I think that the, the idea was doing a little bit more of the outreach that will help inform how we might wanna do some code amendments. Um, we can certainly do it sooner, but understand that they might change as we go through this process and, and decide how, you know, how we want to allow and regulate, um.
Sure, I mean, there's some stuff that is probably gonna be clearly obvious for us that we have to strike. Uh, there's gonna be some stuff that's vague, we'll have to look at it, but, yeah, I think just, just, just a reminder, keep it in the forefront. I don't want us to get caught off guard from July.
Can we do some, can we, like, split it up, and do, like, a first draft, and then?
Yeah, we kind of are already, I, I, I understand, and I think might, it might reveal itself more quickly than I was giving our this time for.
What's next?
That's all I have on this, uh, this is wonderful feedback, I appreciate it, and.
Any other questions for Julia on, on this topic, or shall we go to communications, city staff, council?
I'm just trying to just make any of this.
Administrator?
So I have a number of, um, comments, one, I forgot Julie is still here. So I was gonna announce the revitalized downtown state winter fest, um, that they're putting together, November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Um, as Julie mentioned, there's a People's Choice Window Decorating Contest, and she mentioned that to me, I thought it'd be a fun idea to have a mayor's award, or a council's award, and, and I wanted to see what council thought about that, and if you think that's a great idea, would it be a mayor's award or a council's award? And how much prize money would you want to think about, um, driving into the pot?
I'll do it, somebody else puts up the money.
I think the city would probably, um, find a way to have it.
No, I like the idea, uh, when we had car parades at Summerfest night, was invited several years and enjoyed thoroughly, picked the, the car, or cars I liked in the car show, and that was a great treat, and I thoroughly enjoyed that, I think any, anybody would, oh. But yeah, yeah, you bet, if the council wants to do a, an award, that's even better, I'll happily do it.
I think it should be the mayor's award, Mr. Mayor, this is Council Patty, I think it should be the mayor's award, since this is your last term as mayor, right?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but you're, you're the face, you're the face of the council.
The last. But what's, but what's will help too, so that'll be, I think, good.
You might seek input.
What were, uh, what were the other awards?
So there was a People's Choice Award, and it sounds like that was gonna be funded through RDS, and it was gonna be five hundred dollars.
Should we match that? Mayor? I'm gonna say, I'm okay with that, as long as it's, they're not the same recipients.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That would, that would make that quite a festival, wouldn't it? Yeah.
Can I say one thing, one of the rules that we did for the People's Choice was you had to have lights in your window, because we're trying to get businesses to light up the sidewalk that doesn't have any lights on the, the west side of Third Avenue. So that was one of our rules.
Yes, that could be.
So for, for the audience at home, um, what was stated from the audi, uh, from the audience here, was that the People's Choice Award was required, there to be lights, not just window decorations. Um, so that's something that, that the mayor can think about making a criteria if he chooses.
So maybe, let's see, is the, is RDS offering what they call the People's Choice Award?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's their, their big one, and ours, uh, I don't know, we'll figure something out, how would it be?
The mayor's grand finale stupor duver.
Love order.
Order award. Last chance, he's checking out. Please, please.
Mr. Mayor?
We'll figure it out, thank you.
I think I have a caveat to that, though. You're not gonna give out the award for buying you, uh, decorate your car.
Oh.
Your, your, your car, you know, you always tell the police chief, like, you wanna get by without having lights on it this time, it'll go, buddy.
It's supposed to have a tail, I don't know, okay, all right, here we go. What else, Julia, I have one more.
Uh, just as a reminder, um, we will be having interviews for police chief, um, in the coming weeks, and I've, I know, um, some of you have told me you wanna be on, um, interview panels, but if you're interested, let me know, and I'll find a spot for you. Okay?
I think, pretty much, just a quick question on that, pretty much balanced, uh, I hold, uh, citizen input, uh, uh, or community input, and then, and then staff and professional.
Yeah, it's probably slightly unbalanced, um, I'm envisioning three panels, one would be an expert panel with police chiefs and sheriffs, um, another would be a community leaders panel, um, with members from the community, as well as a few counselors, and then another panel would be a council or department head panel. So I think it's pretty heavy, you know, not all, we can't have all the department heads for a variety of reasons, but, um, so that's the, um.
Julia, how many candidates do you have?
Three. Um, and then I also wanted to let you know, um, to, to think about this, I know elections are coming up, but, um, on, there's, uh, the leader organ cities is doing their elected essentials and mayor's workshop, they've got a variety throughout the state, but I was looking at the ones that are closest to us, there's a, um, uh, evening and day one on, um, December fifth and December sixth, so I think like after five or six on December fifth, and all day on September, uh, December sixth, um, in Albany. Um, and then there is a full day one in Kaiser from seven thirty in the morning until eight o'clock at night, that sounds horrible, um, but, they've got plenty of them, yeah, so think about that, and I'd like to try to get everybody, um, uh, on January twenty-sixth. Um, and I'll send you this in your weekly update, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there, and have you thinking about that. You might be discussing this under your comments, but I'm gonna beat you to it. Um, the Heart Hospital Parking Collaborative, um, was held by the hospital, hosted on October fourth. Um, I met with some of my team, um, this last week, and we have a variety of some potential ideas that we're still exploring a little bit further, but we hope to be back to the council in the near future to discuss, and I'll schedule a work session, 'cause I have a feeling, now that we asked to schedule a work session, um, so just wanted to let you know that. Um, and then also, the hospital is, um, scheduled to come to council on, um, November seventh to provide our first partner update. I think I've mentioned to, to some or all of you guys that I want to add something to the agenda, where we're inviting different community partners to come and share what they're doing, you know, what, just, what they're doing, and you guys have an opportunity to ask questions, and so we'll be, they'll be the first ones to come, and I'll be trying to get others scheduled as we move forward. And if you guys have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, that work session, when do you plan on doing that potentially?
I don't know, um, I, just looking at the calendar, um, there's not a lot, um, in the near, you know, we basically have November seventh, and then we're probably gonna cancel the November twenty-first one, because it's the week of Thanksgiving, but it could potentially be then, if that's when it works, um, otherwise it would be in, um, December, um, December, end of year.
That's manageable, I just, the reason I ask is, it looks like it's still an issue, I literally saw some people parking places that were not great on my way home, and I, I think that we need to tackle that problem and not lose sight of it, that's why I was bringing that up, thank you.
Okay, uh, you got yours?
Uh, but it's been tuned into a movie, and it's really cool, so you can go see the film at Star Cinema, um, October twenty-second. So what is that, Saturday?
Yep.
This Saturday, um, one P M, and go see it there, you can also watch it online from the comfort of your own home or wherever, and that's gonna be, um, between October twenty-third and November fifth, and you pay five dollars, and you have twenty-four access to it. I can tell you that my dad is a huge history buff, and he loved watching it, and loved the town, and, um, it's great. So I, it's, it's really, it's a really fun thing, lots of community members got together and did it, so, um, support RDS and their efforts to, um, work on beautifying our town downtown, uh, with that, okay, so there's that, and then, thank you for bringing up the parking issue, I did have that. Talking with, uh, Council Patty and I, um, talked with a community member about, um, loose dogs, and the process in which, um, I don't know if I wanna say this, but just basically, like, there is really no standard of what happens when there's a loose dog in town, where does it go, this city doesn't really have any, any way to house them, um, the dogs are then taken to Marion County, and so it's just kind of a big thing, that it can be difficult for people to get them out. So I just wanted to see if there's any interest in the council, I'm not saying it's gonna go anywhere, I don't really have a solution for it, and I wanted to know if this, if you were interested in having a discussion about this issue.
There's two dog control people from the county, and so to have someone out here picking up strays, I don't know what the process is, what the, the police call someone from Marion County.
So the, um, the input from this person, the suggestion, was that, uh, they used to live in Independence, and they do have, at the, um, police department, they do have kennels, that are like temporary kennels, that again brings in an issue of, you know, taking care of the dogs, walking the dog, whatever it is, you know, temporarily, um, again, this is just me bringing it forward and asking if you wanna have a conversation about it.
Lot of independents.
And we can see what they do, and if it's something that we, um, have the ability to do, we might not even have the ability to do that, I did tell this community member that.
Is it, is it a problem, did she think it was, or he think it was?
Uh, they help run, um, basically, if, if there are, if there are loose dogs, uh, this person is called to help out with that, because she's known as a community member that wants to do that, but she's been taking this on, and it's a big, um, kind of, time, time issue for her, and, and a little stressful, so.
Temporary hillwork kind of thing?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, this is Council Patty?
Yes?
Yeah, I definitely would be, uh, open to putting this on each other, just kind of discussing it, informational item, at least, to better understand what the process is, how we can approve it, if there's some unconventional ideas that we heard, uh, that we could bring back and potentially implement with staff. So we definitely in favor of bringing this to discussion, uh, at a regular session.
Well, if anyone sees a white golden dude taking his, with his leash and his mouth, thanking himself for a walk, uh, you can know who to call. He's probably the only one around that does that, so he says, I hope not, add to the problem. Anyone else, anything else?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I'm, I'm open to discussing those, well, I know, I might, might too have gotten out a couple times, I've spent, you know, an hour or so driving around town, trying to figure what they meant. Um, we got something, I'm gonna talk about that.
Good, good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes.
I would also agree with that, um, from a historical perspective, back in the day, uh, our code enforcement officer used to handle that, so we can roll ahead to another discussion about code enforcement.
And even if we just set up a process for, in, in more information on our page on what to do in this, in this situation, a lot of people don't really know, and they're like, oh, I just took it into, you know, Marion County.
One time, we had a truck that had cages in it, I don't know if we still have it, ten years ago now. A temporary kettle ideal, temporary, yep, okay.
Other things?
Okay, just have one more thing.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank, um, Sebastian Baker, of my kids, I know, um, I've seen the, um, the timeline of, of events that have happened with your library boxes, and, um, it was really sad to me when, uh, the doors came off and you decided not to put them back on, like you did, and so I'm sad to hear that something else happened to them, my kids really enjoy a little library, um, we like to, uh, take books we don't read, um, but we still enjoy them, and, um, putting books in there, so I just wanted to thank you for thinking about the community and trying to offer some enjoyment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, to that point, Sebastian, great job, it'd be one another location, if I knew one, uh, you could put one in front of my house. There's a lot of traffic through that little alleyway, or through the vacant lock-in's my house, and so, that's a consideration, if you wanna do it, come lock my door, it'll make it happen.
Oh, I might have a good spot for you too, I get a lot of walkers.
Good, good, good things, anything else to say? Anything else to say? Let's go on then, music's here, anything else?